And I would like to call the Chair of the Portland Board of Public Education to the podium, Sarah Lentz, for her State the Schools speech.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dionne, City Councilors, fellow board members who are here in the room and online, and other Portlanders. My name is Sarah Lentz, and I'm the Chair of the Portland Board of Public Education. I'd like to acknowledge other board members that are in the room, so if you can stand. Ooh, okay, that one. Other board members, yeah, thank you very much. Our Vice Chair Bondo is joining us online, and I'd also like to recognize our new Superintendent, Dr. Ryan Scallan, here in the front row. There's other staff, union leadership, and other dedicated members of the Portland Public Schools team, both here and online as well, and I'd like to recognize them. I invite you all to take a moment to ground here together, to take a deep breath, to take a breath to become fully present. Take a breath to feel your body and push your feet into the floor, into the land that our city and schools are built upon, the unceded land of the Wabanaki, the people of the Don. This is the same land that our schools were built on before Maine had even pursued statehood. In the 1700s, we saw our first one-room schoolhouse here in Portland. In 1821, Portland High School was founded and is now the second-oldest continuously-operating public high school in the U.S. Over the last several hundred years, this district has grown and evolved in various ways and based on numerous social and political issues. Our district has navigated racial and gender segregation, tensions between state and local control, inadequate funding, and many other challenges. Today, the Portland Public Schools is Maine's largest school district, with ten elementary schools, two of which are on islands. That's pretty cool. Three middle schools and four high schools, plus Maine's largest adult education program, Portland Adult Education. All the buildings that hold our schools are essential in creating structure and providing safe places to learn. But it's the people in these buildings who are the true core of our district. It's the people who move us through our challenges, who celebrate our successes, and who really represent the state of our schools. These people, over 6,600 students, 2,000 adult learners, and more than 1,500 staff and countless family and community members, is where the state of our schools lies. Tonight, I'm choosing to share stories about people from our district, people whose stories personify both our strengths and our challenges. But before I start sharing about our wonderful students, I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone across the city today who helped to navigate this storm. We lost power in many of our schools and departments, and staff worked in alignment to make sure that students stayed safe and families knew what was happening. When I picked up my son from Ocean Avenue this afternoon, because they were without power, there was a team of drenched adults outside maintaining order and directing kids and other adults. They were very wet. There were crossing guards, bus drivers, ed techs, teachers, and others working all together, but they all had smiles on their faces. It was incredible to behold, and it was so inspiring as I sat in my car because I wanted to be dry. I'm sure there were similar coordinated efforts all across the city, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone that did that work today and continues to do the work. Okay, so now back to the speech. To start with, our students. Our students embody remarkable diversity. In the whitest state in the country, our student body speaks over 50 languages. Thirty percent of them are actively learning English right now. Fifty-two percent of our students are students of color. Eighteen percent are supported by special education services, and seven percent are experiencing homelessness. All of these layers of diversity create a unique and rich environment for our students to learn in. We are so lucky. Several weeks ago, we welcomed six new student representatives to the Board of Education, one from each of our high schools. They showed up to our first meeting prepared to participate. They asked questions about the racial and power dynamics within the schools, used nuance to understand organizational structure within the district, and demonstrated intense passion for issues. I was really impressed, as I know many adults who would not have been able to engage in the same ways. But these students are not an anomaly. And I know many of you are parents and see this on a daily basis. Our district is filled with this kind of brilliance everywhere you look. For instance, Mara Aslami. She's a standout 2023 graduate of Casco Bay High School, and she's now attending the University of Southern Maine. In September, she was named the recipient of Mainly Character Scholarship, sponsored by Northern Light Health. She was recognized for her determination, as well as her many accomplishments. At the age of 16, Mara spent a year working to get her younger cousin Fahad out of Afghanistan after he was seriously injured by a gunshot wound to the face. She did this all while acclimating to Maine as an immigrant, excelling in her high school classes, acting as the Maine interpreter for her family, guiding her brothers and sisters as well, and earning a seal of biliteracy for her proficiency in six languages. This is not an anomaly. Three Portland Public High School students are semifinalists in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program: Adrian Darlington, Kayden Heeman, and Metan Schoenfeld, all seniors at Portland High School. The National Merit Scholarship Program honors individual students who show exceptional academic ability and potential for success in rigorous college studies. These students now join other talented high school seniors nationwide who have the opportunity to compete for nearly $28 million in scholarships. At the 2023 Maine Literary Awards in May, Deering High School senior Mayanga Mukania won the Youth Nonfiction Award for her piece "No Water, No Food: 13 Days in the Jungle." Her story was published in the Telling Room Chat Book, Between My Ribs. Another Deering senior, Nizik Adam, was a finalist. Mayanga credits her teacher Molly Callahan for connecting her with the telling room and appreciates the integration of writing and art in a Deering art class. Portland High School student Balaria Yugo in May became the 2023 recipient of the Portland High School Step Up Award. This Step Up Award at Portland High provides funding for students in the Make It Happen program who would otherwise have to forego school-year extracurricular opportunities. Instead, they would need to work after school or on the weekends. Balaria, a junior, will receive $1,250 now per semester until graduation for her last two years of high school. This Step Up Award was created by Ann and Bill Weber, parents of two Portland High School graduates. In March, Portland High School senior Jamie Boye Mabeyavangah won the runner-up award at the Poetry Out Loud competition. The Maine State final event required 10 student winners from across the state to recite three poems throughout the evening. Jamie enthralled the judges and audience with his recitation of "Fable for Blackboard" by George Starbucks, "April Midnight" by Arthur Simons, and "We Wear the Mask" by Paul Lawrence Dunbar. To prepare, Jamie spent hours with his English teacher reciting his three poems. Oh, and that English teacher's name is Ann Hall. I don't want to leave her out. For Love Teaching Appreciation Week last February, Maine students were invited to participate in a writing contest to talk about the teachers that have made a difference in their lives. Casco Bay sophomore Joe Ellis, who represented her school on the Board of Public Education last year, won the statewide essay competition, writing about a teacher who made a difference in her life. Casco Bay Humanities teacher Matt Bernstein, who also was Teacher of the Year in 2023. I've been in Matt's classroom many times, and I totally get how Joe was inspired. Also, Casco Bay junior Everett Dietlin earned honorable mention for his tribute to fifth-grade teacher Kathy Gurney at Ocean Avenue Elementary School. The Deering Debate Team won numerous awards at the Maine State Speech and Debate Championships at Bangor High School this past January. The team also won the 2023 NPM/MPA Sportsmanship Award at the event. The wins at the state championship were especially significant because only the ninth and 10th graders participated. The older, more experienced students were not able to attend, so the younger students held their own. This past November, Portland Public Schools student athletes were on fire. I don't know if you saw all the press coverage, pretty cool. The Portland High Boys Cross Country Team won the state title for the first time in 45 years, holding off Scarborough for the Class A state championship. Also, Portland High's Samantha Moore was the Class A cross-country state champion. The Deering High Boys Soccer Team won the Class A South Boys Soccer Championship game. It was the first time the Rams had played in a regional final since 1999. Also, the Portland High Football Team won the Class A North Football Championship and went on to face Thornton Academy in the state championship in November. In May, Lyman Moore students hosted a middle school Model United Nations Conference, organized in cooperation with the Model UN Club at Bates College. Approximately 50 student delegates from our Maine schools participated and worked to pass resolutions on such topics as whether the United Nations should impose a global ban on single-use plastics and whether governments should prioritize conservation efforts for charismatic species over less-well-known species. The event was a huge success, and Lyman Moore students won several awards. Awardees included Jane Penyard, who was recognized for parliamentary protocol? Are you kidding me? Finn Hutchins and Noah Sabo Molina, who were recognized as team players, and Tucker Wood, who won for verbal accommodation. This past school year, for the first time, Odyssey of the Mind was offered at Rowe Elementary School. For those who don't know, Odyssey of the Mind is an international creativity competition that helps students of all ages develop science, technology, and engineering, arts, and math skills through problem-solving, critical thinking, teamwork, and performing art. Fast forward to the Northeastern Tournament on March 25, when two of three teams from Rowe School placed first and second in their problems and were invited to compete in the World Finals in Michigan. There was laughter, cheering, and tears of happiness as this group of fourth and fifth graders congratulated each other on their outstanding achievements. A winter concert at Deering High on December 14 included performances from PPS High School Orchestra, led by music director Julian Eberle, that ranged from reggae jingle bells to Beethoven's Allegretto from Symphony Number Seven. The Deering Hand Bell Ensemble delighted the audience with such classics as Beethoven's "Ode to Joy," and, under the direction of Abby Hutchins, the Deering High Chorus offered a multicultural selection of songs, including traditional Congolese, Nigerian, and Spanish carols. The district has also begun hosting an art show at our central office. The first show opened December 1 and with the First Friday Art Walk, featuring amazing artwork from our talented elementary, middle, and high school students, a reflection of the important instruction of our great art teachers. Moving forward, we plan to regularly rotate the student art shows every few months to coincide with upcoming art walks. Andy Weisman Summers, the Executive Director of the Foundation of Portland Public Schools, recently helped launch a fund that is specific to music and arts so that these areas can continue to be supported within the district. The Black Student Unions at Deering High and Lyman Moore have been combining forces to build a bigger community of students who have the space to thrive, express themselves, and learn important history. DSU Presidents Khalid and Estrilla, along with their cabinet members, have been doing a phenomenal job leading events like Real Black Talk, which features local Black leaders, and Foods Giving, which features delicious food. I know many of you also have young people within our district and could add to this list easily. I hope that you're sharing these stories in our community so that other people know how remarkable our students are. And now on to our wonderful staff. First, Dr. Ryan Scallan, who's with us tonight, became the new Superintendent of the Portland Public Schools this summer, following a unanimous board vote on June 6. Dr. Scallan was most recently an Assistant Superintendent in the School District of Philadelphia and holds a doctorate in education. He emerged as our top choice from an initial nationwide pool of 47 applicants. The Board believed, and now sees, that Ryan embodies the skills needed to move our district forward. Over the course of the interview process, the Board and Search Committee spent hours with Ryan, understanding his commitment to equity, his demonstrated success in building sustainable systems and operations, and his deep and sustained investment in the staff and educators around him. Ryan is an active and engaged listener, collaborative in nature, and humble. And the bulk of his career has been in schools where the majority of students have been historically excluded. In addition to having experience as a teacher, principal, and administrator, Ryan is also a parent with children in our schools. He brings all of these important perspectives to the superintendent role. For those of you who have already met him, it might seem like he's been with us for years because he already knows so much about the district. This familiarity comes in part because during the first few months he was here, he embedded himself within the community, listening to anyone that would talk to him. These listening sessions, on top of several community surveys, have given us thousands of data points about what is working and what needs improvement within our district. Ryan has been using this information to help us focus our work on specific areas that I'll discuss a little bit later. Joshua Shard, a second- and third-grade looping teacher at East End Community School, rose from being named 2023 Cumberland County Teacher of the Year to being selected as 2024 Maine Teacher of the Year in October. In announcing Joshua's selection for the honor, Maine Education Commissioner Pender Makin praised Joshua's passion for teaching, his love for students and public education, and his ability to make each and every person feel welcome and like they belong. This is the third time in the past four years that a Portland Public Schools teacher has achieved this honor. I'm really proud of that. Matt Bernstein, a humanities teacher at Casco Bay High School, is the 2023 Maine Teacher of the Year, and Cindy Sewell, the district's literacy coordinator, was the 2021 Teacher of the Year. In August, Julia Hazel, the Portland Public Schools Director of Black Indigenous and People of Color Career Pathways and Leadership Development, won a 2023 Maine Black Excellence Award, presented by the third place. Julia received the Compass Career Award, which recognizes an individual who has accomplished a standout achievement in their workplace or sector. Julia was recognized for her PPS work and her efforts to organize BIPOC educators around the state, improving the quality of life for Black Mainers. At the Portland Public Schools, Julia serves as a resource and support to current BIPOC educators, creates career advancement pathways and leadership opportunities for educational technicians and teachers, amplifies Black excellence and expertise, and fosters relationship-building and mutual support within the BIPOC community. In part because of Julia's work and other staff, like Barrett Wilkinson and his work, the number of Black, Indigenous, and staff of color across the district continues to increase. While we know that there is more work to do within this area, we are proud to say that we are now at 16% BIPOC educators and staff across the district, which is up from 7% in 2016. We know that having staff that represents our student demographics in every area is crucial to the academic and social successes of our students. Shoshana Huth, a dedicated ESOL teacher, English as a Second Language teacher at Portland Adult Education, received the Maine Adult Education Association's Outstanding Teacher Award. Shoshana is an expert at designing creative curricula to serve our adult learners, who have a diverse and unique set of strengths and needs. Shoshana exemplifies the Portland Adult Education commitment to empower students to achieve their educational, professional, and personal goals. Many of these adult students have children in our schools, and so the success of PAE students helps entire families realize their full potential as members of our community. Kyle Davenport, a Deering High School science teacher, was one of 10 educators this past May to win an inaugural Air and Space Force's Century Educator Award. This is a lot of words about these awards. Instituted by 319th Recruiting Squadron at Hanson Air Force Base in Massachusetts. The new award recognizes the top 10 educators throughout New England who demonstrate support of Air Force core values of integrity, service, and excellence. Kyle was recognized as an exemplary instructor who helped reverse a long enrollment decline in chemistry and physics courses at Deering. In addition to nurturing young people's love of science, Kyle also mentors less experienced teachers. Emily Surway, a Deering High School art teacher, was the winner of the Russell Award for the 2022-2023 school year. The Russell Award is an honor bestowed upon one Deering teacher each year who exemplifies a firm commitment to the teaching profession, shares a love for learning with their students, demonstrates intimate involvement in the ongoing life and activities of the high school, and displays creative self-renewal in their teaching practices. Emily's classroom is known as a haven for students and even staff. A student recently coined the motto "Surway for Sanity" because of the calming mental health effects her classroom has on him and his classmates. Deering High School's Greg Tossey, in April, was among eight athletic trainers across Maine named as Legends in the Field by the Maine Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. Greg was praised as an outstanding athletic trainer who has served Deering and PPS communities for more than two decades and is always there, caring for and supporting Deering student athletes, coaches, and staff on the fields and off. Pamela Otuno, Director of Secondary Academic Access and Outcomes, led amazing work this past year around creating a Portrait of a Graduate. A Portrait of a Graduate is a shared vision of the knowledge, skills, and character traits that our students should possess upon graduation. It states what students should be able to do and what qualities they should have in order to succeed in college, career, and life. It guides curriculum and instruction, assessments, professional development for educators, and decision-making processes in the district to ensure that all students are prepared for the challenges and opportunities that await them after high school. Rebecca Turkowitz, a 10th-grade English teacher at Casco Bay High School, is also a published author. This fall, she was featured in Maine Educator Magazine for inspiring her students to think outside their school walls and to investigate a world only they can create through writing. Rebecca not only incorporates her expertise as a writer into her role as an educator, but also shares her ideas on how all educators can support students in the classroom. Portland High School Principal Sheila Jepson, in March, was named 2023 Maine Association of School Libraries School Administrator of the Year. The award honors administrators who, through the individual leadership and sustained effort, have made worthy contributions to the operations and effective school library media services within the educational program. Sheila was praised for her supportive nature and willingness to listen to new ideas. She was recognized as a special principal who has always focused on her students' growth potential, not their perceived deficits. Anne Marie Orth, a Spanish teacher at Casco Bay High School and a world language teacher for the Portland Public Schools in March, won the Educators for a Multilingual Maine's 2023 Teacher of the Year Award. This award honors a teacher who has achieved outstanding results in teaching modern or classic languages. Anne Marie was recognized for her excellent teaching and her belief that learning a new language gives students another lens to experience the world. Libby Catania, a special education teacher and case manager at East End Community School, was selected as 2023 Outstanding Woman by Maine Coast 93.1 in conjunction with Hannahford Supermarkets. Libby established Our Place, an organization that offers free summer camps, after-school mentorship groups, and family advocacy services to families living in Kennedy Park and East Bayside. It also provides meals to kids. Dr. Grace Valenzuela, I apologize, and her team helped us welcome almost 1,000 immigrants, refugees, and multilingual students into the district last year. This number is almost double what we welcomed last year and the most we've ever welcomed since we started tracking in 1996. Not only does our multilingual center help students and families orient to our district, they also offer support and access to things like winter coats, culturally relevant food, and direct connections to other needed services. Grace and her team also ensured that we qualified for additional funding through the state's ELL hardship program. A September article in The Press Herald acknowledged that the Portland Public Schools was one of the few main districts that was fully staffed with bus drivers. The piece featured dedicated veteran PPS bus driver Lisa Martel, who loves her job and her students that she serves. The article served to highlight how our bus drivers do their job with their heart and, like so many of our vital support staff, are key to positive school experiences for our students. As one second grader put it, "Miss Lisa is kind, and she makes me feel safe." This spring, renovations will be completed on all four aging elementary schools for which the city voters in 2017 approved a $64 million bond. Renovations to Liseth Elementary were completed in 2021. Work at Presum Scott School finished this past year, and renovations at Longfellow Elementary School were completed this fall, with only a few small items remaining. And Reiki is on track to finish this spring with the only work remaining there outside the original scope of the renovation. These improvements represent a major step towards providing 21st-century learning environments for all of our students. And if you haven't driven by, I suggest you do because it is pretty cool to see these schools. They light up the spaces that they're in. And as Presum Scott Principal Angela Taylor puts it, "Her school has now been transformed into a space that's been created with children in mind." Many thanks to Tamara Sweeney, our Director of Facilities, and her entire team for getting these projects to completion. The immense strengths of our staff and students have kept us moving forward during the hardest parts of this last year. As you'll remember, during last year's State of the Schools, the district was experiencing major turmoil as our payroll and surrounding systems were failing and our superintendent had resigned. We were lucky to have Erin Townsend and Malia Nally lead the district until Dr. Scallan came on board. And under their combined leadership, we have made significant progress on our operations and systems. We hired a new Executive Director of Budget and Finance, Helene de Bartolomeo, I'll work on that one, who has been working tirelessly to help move us forward from one payroll system to another. We're on track, and just as a reminder, we're moving from Munis to ADP. We're on track to have our first payroll run in January through the new system, ADP. This has not been an easy process at all. If you remember, part of the reason that payroll failed to begin with was that the system had not been set up properly from the start. In migrating to ADP, we've been cleaning up data and codifying systems across the district to make sure that the data going into ADP is accurate now and set up to be accurate in the future. If you've ever been a part of migrating or changing payroll systems, you know how grueling it can be and how many opportunities for errors there are. We know that our first payroll on this new system won't be entirely correct. But we are doing everything in our power to get it as close to right as we can. And during this process, we've also been actively and proactively communicating with staff about what to expect and what to do if there are errors. On the backend, we've been creating an extremely tight system to receive staff outreach and ensure that issues are resolved quickly. In addition to migrating to this new system, we've continued to work with Barry Dunn to make sure all remaining issues from last year have been rectified. Again, because there were issues with our data systems and processes in all of these areas, the solutions have been nuanced and are taking much longer than anyone would like or expected. As we move to the new payroll system, our sick and vacation day accruals have been updated. Barry Dunn is working closely with PPS and Maine Purse, and we anticipate all Maine Purse accounts to be fully rectified by late winter. Similarly, Barry Dunn is currently auditing our voluntary retirements, and that will be completed on the same timeline. I know we have a long way to go to rebuild the trust in our finance and operational systems with our staff and our community. As I told a constituent recently at a district meeting, one of Dr. Scallan's strengths is that he's getting down to the bottom of issues in our district and not stopping until we're down to the studs, looking under every rock, every cranny, fully understanding where systems are not working or inefficient, and he's building them back in sustainable, dependable, and documented ways. Note the documentation, super helpful. Experiencing the results of these new systems is what will build trust, and that will take time. But we are 100% committed to building that trust. In addition to all the work around systems and operations, we've also embarked on a strategic planning process to set our course for the next five years. Many of you might know that the vision outlined in the Portland Promise was ready for a refresh, and we've been working this fall on a plan that will address a number of areas within the district. It will be grounded in the Listen and Learn sessions that Dr. Scallan did and survey data, and the development process is being guided by a committee, a diverse citywide group of stakeholders that include Vice Chair Bondo and myself. We've met to identify five-year goals and the priorities and initiatives that the district will deliver to achieve on those goals. At the end of this process, we will have outcome-oriented goals for the next five years and a limited number of high-impact strategies to achieve those goals. and a limited number of high-impact strategies to achieve those goals. There will be additional opportunity for community input in this strategic plan from focus groups in January and February, as well as a community survey. The outcome of this work will also be used in our budget process to guide our spending. But we aren't waiting until the completion of the strategic plan to put important work forward. The board and district leadership collaborated this summer and fall to create four objectives for this year. These objectives encompass the most important work of the district right now and provide a lens through which we make decisions. They are helping us decide what does and doesn't get our attention. These objectives are: We are one team with common goals, mission, and values. This objective has us focused on making sure that our people have what they need through recruitment, onboarding, training, and great communication. Objective number two: We are growing our capacity to ensure the achievement of all students, starting with our historically marginalized students. This means building data systems that disaggregate by race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, and other factors so that we can build appropriate solutions for the problems we seek to solve. This objective also means continuing to invest in strategies like English as a Second Language credentials for staff and doubling down on equity education for anyone who works in the district. Objective number three is that we provide students with a challenging, relevant, and joyful education that prepares and empowers our students to pursue their dreams. The two tenants of this objective are fully implementing our literacy curriculum across the district and making sure that every school is successfully using PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, as well as restorative practices and alternatives to suspension. Objective number four: Organizational coherence. Our systems work, save time, and allow us to focus on outcomes for our students. This last objective has us investing in standard operating procedures, our safety and emergency management processes, and delivering and passing a budget. And speaking of budgets, much like the city's budget, this year is looking incredibly grim. Early estimates have us looking straight at a deficit of at least ten million dollars. This deficit arrives from three different areas: increased cost to existing mandatory expenses like special education costs, increased salaries and benefits, and debt service. Two: Elimination of federal funding tied to COVID-19 SRF. All of these funds must be spent by September of 2025, and then there's no more money remaining in those funds. And the third part is decreased state funding. One of the biggest factors that determines state funding, like I think many of you know, but for folks listening at home, one of the biggest factors that determines state funding to schools is local property value. With our property values going up, the state assumes more can be funded at a local level. Without changes to that formula, we see this as a trend that will continue beyond this year. Like last year, we're already working with the city to align our processes and strategy for building this next year's budget. The good news is that we do have a healthy fund balance within the district, and those are reserves that can be used to offset some of this deficit, but they cannot cover all of it. About eighty percent of our budget is directly connected to people costs. That's salaries and benefits and people. To balance our budget this year, there will be cuts to programming and staff. As I spent the first half of this speech highlighting, our district is our people, and it's going to take all of us to get through this. But I know that we can. Humor me for a moment, if you will. Please stand if you are or ever were a Portland Public Schools student, and stay standing. Thank you. Please stand if you worked for the Portland Public Schools in the past. Please stand if you work for the Portland Public Schools now. Please stand if you are or ever have been a Portland Public Schools board member. Please stand if you are a parent or a caregiver of a Portland Public Schools student. Please stand if you know anyone who has gone to a Portland Public Schools. Oh, 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 you're lying if you don't stand up. Okay, now look around. If you aren't standing, I invite you to now. I invite you into this wonderful community. We are the Portland Public Schools, and we are what move us forward through the hard times and the good. I'm asking you all to continue to show up and stand up for our schools, to believe deeply in their potential, and to hold us to that with grace and curiosity. I look forward to working with every single one of you. Thank you. You can be seated now. Good job. Yeah. And I'm happy to take any questions from you, Mary Darian, or any counselors that might have them.
Are there any questions for my colleagues or the chair? I do have a comment.
Okay, I'll take it.
Thank you for being candid, and I want the public to know that the chair, working with the former mayor, accepted the responsibility of shared leadership on the question of finances and fiscal management, and that was supported by the city manager and our staff. Sarah Brighton and I worked together as finance chairs. So sometimes the narrative says that we are adversaries in this process. Mayor Snyder and Chair Lance demonstrated the opposite. They set the stage for true partnership. I appreciated it in my role, and I hope that Counsel Travarro, as our new finance chair, and she's somewhat familiar with your community, will be able to build on that partnership so we can get a resolution that meets our responsibilities to taxpayers and the expectations of our children and parents. Thank you. Counsel Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I really don't have much to add, and I appreciate your comments just now. I just want to perhaps comment directly to you, Mayor, in the upcoming years. I remember fondly being able to deliver the State of the Schools address, and one of the things that I remember about it is that although it's being presented to the council, it's really a message to the city. So if perhaps in the future, when the chair of the board presents this, if we can invite them to speak at the head of the podium and address the public as is intended, just a small gesture that I think means a lot. But it's one of the things that I really appreciated about the opportunity to express what happens over the course of the year in Portland Public Schools to the audience that really intends to hear that information, just a thought.
My short answer is yes. It's a good suggestion.
Counsel Rodriguez, it is weird to have my back to the community, yes.
It's sometimes easier, trust me. Trust me, when you look out on this crowd, it's tough, Chair. But I think as a matter of protocol and respect between our bodies, I think Counsel Rodriguez's observation is heard by the chair, and I'll be reminded, I'm sure, next year that I fulfilled that pledge to do that. Thank you. Any final comments from my colleagues? Seeing none. Thank you.